Called to order for the March 4th, 2019 San Carlos City Planning Commission Meeting. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner David Roof will not be participating in this project due to property within 500 feet, which is the required distance regarding a conflict of interest. So I just wanted to make that announcement. Commissioner Iacapone?
Here.
Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Vice Chair Berkman?
Here.
And Chair Bradley?
Present. Thank you. First item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act here in California. However, the planning commission's general policy is to refer items to the staff for their attention or have the matter placed on a future planning commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Next item is the approval of the minutes for our last meeting, which was February 4th, 2019. Any comments on the minutes?
None for me.
No comments. I move to approve the minutes as so stated.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Oh, through the chair, I need to do a roll call though. Thank you. No problem.
Wrong meeting.
Commissioner Iacapone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Berkman?
Upstaying.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. The minutes are approved. Public hearings. Procedure for public hearings to the planning commissioner, the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested parties, members of the community, may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held after that. The planning commission will then consider evidence and make its recommendation. If you choose to challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing, described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or... Excuse the interruption. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door back in the corner there and hand it to our recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist the staff in preparing future minutes. One case to be considered tonight is 808 Alameda de Las Palgas, public hearing on the scope of the environmental impact report. Lisa?
Thank you. Good evening. We do have a few empty seats. If anybody would like to have a seat, there's a few in the front. I see a few over here. So come on in, make yourself comfortable. The item before you, as you indicated, is the environmental impact report scoping hearing and project introduction. And I'm going to go ahead and introduce the team. I am Lisa Costa-Sanders, principal planner for the city of San Carlos, and I'm serving as the staff liaison for this project. The city has retained the consulting firm of MIG, and Tricia Stevens is our project manager. So she'll be the one really doing the heavy lifting on evaluating the project, assisting with the staff reports and presentations, and she'll be introducing the project this evening. We've also retained the firm of Placeworks, and they're going to be the SEQA analysis and document preparer. This evening we have Greg Goodfellow and Steve Nowak. Steve is a principal with the firm. And so I'll just go ahead and introduce the scoping session. This is very early stage of the project review. We have not completed a detailed analysis at this point, and the purpose of this scoping hearing is to introduce the project, inform the community as well as agencies that the city will be preparing an environmental impact report, and receive input on the scope and contact of the environmental analysis. We will be receiving comments from the commissioners as well as the public. But in most cases, unless there's a procedural question, we will not be responding to the comment or responding to the question. So that's a little unique in these planning commission hearings. We're usually very well prepared and can answer all your questions. But in this evening, the intent really is to hear from everybody, go back, do the analysis, prepare that full EIR, and that'll be presented later to the community as well as the planning commission. We have several opportunities for public input. You can give public comments at the meeting by speaking to the commission, and we have public comment cards over at the side there. We can present those to staff, and the chair will call your name. We also have a form where you can submit a written public comment. So if you'd rather not speak tonight, go ahead and fill out that public comment, and we can take that this evening. You can also email or mail any written comments to staff by April 1st. That would be the close of the comment period on just the scope of the EIR. And I will mention later the other opportunities for comments. So project background a little bit. This site was one of the properties that the city had targeted for acquisition as park and open space, and unfortunately, Measure V failed, so we were unable to do so. In 2016, it was purchased by the current applicant, Dragonfly. They began doing their pre-planning, design review process. They did submit a pre-application to the city. We've done some preliminary review of that project, and they've since submitted a formal application, which kicked off the start of the environmental impact report preparation process. Okay, and just to give you some context, we've heard some confusion in the past as to exactly which property we're speaking of. So the property is approximately 11 acres in area, accessible from Alameda de Las Palgas. It's known as the former Black Mountain Spring Water Company site, and you see it here on the map shaded in yellow. What is not included in this evening's discussion and is not included in the project is the property shown in blue, and that's referred to as the Vista del Grande site. That's about 12 acres, and the developer is considering options for the site, and that may include approximately 60 housing units. But as I indicated, that is not the project that we're reviewing tonight, just the project shown shaded in yellow. Okay, the site is owned, single-family residential, and the developer has proposed a project that complies with the city's site density and zoning regulations. And as such, the project will be reviewed by the planning commission, does not require action by the city council. The project entitlements include a conditional use permit, design review, grading in dirt haul, and a tentative parcel map. The planning commission will have several hearings on the item, first meeting tonight. Then your next hearing would be on the draft EIR. Well, you'll receive comments on the draft EIR. We'll take those comments, prepare the final EIR, bring that back to the planning commission, then you'll consider the project entitlements together with the final EIR. Okay, I'm now going to hand it over to Tricia Stevens. She'll give you an overview of the project.
Good evening, members of the commission. Again, my name is Tricia Stevens. I'm working with the firm of MIG as a project planner. As Lisa mentioned, the site is a former Black Mountain Spring Water company, and there are some remnants of that, those facilities still in the site. There's four existing parcels, which will be merged into one totaling 11 acres. And as Lisa mentioned, it is in the RS6 single-family zone as well as the hillside overlay zone, and the proposed density is six dwelling units per acre. I'd like to first here refer to the site plan. Okay, so the project... I'm looking for the mouse. So there's 68 units that are proposed. These are townhomes, and the purpose of doing townhomes is to cluster the units to maximize open space. So there's 14 different clusters throughout the site. You can see some of the different clusters here. And the proposed construction is prefab construction, and the reason the applicants want to do the prefab construction is to reduce the construction traffic and noise and reduce the amount of grading. So they'll be building the components and then bringing them into the site. Each unit would have a two-car garage, and the units range in size from 2,861 to 3,525 square feet, and they're three to four bedrooms. And they will also have rooftop decks. And so some of the community features include a community hub. It would be privately owned and would have some open space and outdoor terrace for events and bicycle storage. And then there's a community garden up on the north side, as well as a picnic area. And the project will provide some connections to existing off-site trails, and there's three bio-retention areas throughout the site as well. And I wanted to make a special note that 2.4 acres of the 11-acre site would be kept in natural state areas, and those natural state areas are around the periphery of the project, and that would be undisturbed area. I wanted to say if you make a few comments about the circulation and parking, there would be a two-lane roadway, private roadway that would access the site, and that private roadway would provide, at this point, emergency access to the Vista del Gran property to the north. I know there's been a lot of discussion and comments about cross-access between the two projects, and we understand that's an important issue, and there will be more discussion about that as the project proceeds. There's 136 garage parking spots, two per unit, and then 44 guest parking spaces, 18 community bike racks, and the Samtrans Route 61 bus stop will be right in front of the project. And there's 200 feet of charros, which is a shared lane marking for bikes on the northbound section of Alameda de Las Palgas. And then there would be also a crosswalk across the street. The project includes several sustainability features, including electrical vehicle charging, fast charger infrastructure, green roofs, smart control irrigation, and it'll be a fully electric So these are some renderings of the proposed buildings. There'll be, some will be cut into, will be upsloping, some will be downsloping, depending on their location on the property. And you can see that they will face the private drive, and then they'll have views out towards the west. East. Sorry about that. And then just a few notes about site preparation. This is in the hillside overlay zone, and the average slope on the property is 28.5%. There'll be a fair amount of grading. The applicants intend to make full use of multi-level foundations and terracing to the extent possible to reduce amount of grading and cut and fill. But there will be about 37,000 cubic yards of cut and 27,000 cubic yards of fill, and then that results in about 10,000 cubic yards that would be hauled off the site. The applicants propose to remove a number of protected trees, 232 of them, and of that 232 trees to be removed, 186 would be the coes live oak. That's the most predominant. And then the series of retaining walls are proposed, and the hillside ordinance speaks to a maximum height of retained walls of six feet. The applicants are proposing some of their retaining walls to be over six feet, but those are cut walls that are facing inward to the project, and we'll be evaluating that aspect of the project. So that's a quick overview of what's being proposed, and I'd like to turn things over to Greg for the discussion of the SEQA document.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, staff. I think it's important to understand that we are at a scoping hearing, and this is a, this is the first step in the California Environmental Quality Act public input process, otherwise known as SEQA. And so I just want to give a quick overview of SEQA and of the process we're undertaking now and what will happen in the future as far as public input goes. I think many of you probably know that SEQA is the state's primary environmental law, and it requires that public agencies disclose the impacts that a project may have in terms of the physical effects on an environment. I have "physical effect" italicized because it's important to understand that although in a report like this, we'll look at things such as population, what will ultimately happen is we'll look at whether increased population then will result in an increased need to build something else. So it really goes back to the physical effect of a project, not on social issues or cultural issues. And then the other key part of SEQA is that it needs to identify ways to avoid or reduce those potential impacts through what we call mitigation measures or alternatives to the project. And part of this process, we'll work with the applicant and with staff to develop a series of alternatives that we will also assess in the project, in the EIR process. And those alternatives could be slight variations on the project, a fewer number of units, a different right-of-way up the hill, things like that. So what is this, this EIR, this phrase you hear so much? An EIR is, most importantly, it's an informational document. It does not approve or deny the project. So when this document gets certified, that doesn't mean the project is approved. However, for the project to be approved, it will need a certified environmental impact report. And again, this is a report to disclose information about the effects of a proposed project that they may have or a project may have on the environment. And disclosure is the key word here. SEQA is very much targeting transparency. This is the first part of that transparent process, so you all can understand the process and provide input on the SEQA process, and I'll get to that in a moment. And as I spoke, as I said, the EIR will identify mitigation measures to avoid or reduce any identified impacts if such impacts are identified, and it'll describe these alternatives that I also mentioned. And again, for the project to move forward ultimately, this document will have to be certified by the lead agency, in this case, the city of San Carlos. So here you see a list of bullet points about all the topics that we will focus on in the EIR, and these are included in the official SEQA guidelines in the law itself. We'll look at aesthetics. Is this project going to block any scenic highway views? Air quality. Is the construction of this project going to lead to emissions that could be unhealthy to the community? Biological resources. Is there, is this a known habitat area for the red-legged frog, which is an endangered species? Cultural and tribal resources. We've already started working with the Native American Heritage Commission, so tribal groups can provide their input on potential tribal cultural resources that might be there. We'll look at energy impacts. We'll look at geology and soils. Will these cut-and-fill techniques increase potential for landsliding? Hazardous and hazardous materials, demolition of existing structures. Do those structures have asbestos in them? Hydrology and water quality, land use and planning. Is this project consistent with all of the zoning that we've already talked about? Noise, another big issue in construction and in operation. This is, there are nearby houses, so we'll look closely at ambient noise levels, and if those are going to increase. Population, housing, public services. Is this going to put undue pressure on schools that would force them to, say, have to build another school or add on to an existing school? Parks and recreation, transportation and circulation is of course a big one. Where are the traffic impacts of this project going to be? We'll work with a separate consultant who specializes in this. And utilities, service systems, and finally wildfire. Wildfire is a new one that was just added to this 2019 law, and as you can imagine, this is now an important issue to assess based on the last two years. Okay, this is a little diagram of the SEQA process and chances for public input. As I've stressed, SEQA is all about transparency and providing input. So here we are at that yellow arrow, the current phase, the scoping meeting. What we've already done is issued notices of preparation, which is sort of the beginning of scoping. It's scoping for agencies. We sent out this notice describing the project, giving a notice that we've started the EIR. We've sent this to local agencies, the county, MTC, the Association of Bay Area governments, to give them a chance to provide their input. So again, it's all about disclosure and input. From here, we'll take your comments and all the comments we received, and we'll focus them into the environmental review. We'll include them in the environmental review if they are relevant. We'll complete that draft EIR. Then there'll be a 45-day public comment period, which is again highlighted green because it's another period for everyone who's interested to comment on the draft. We'll take those comments and we'll integrate them into a final EIR. From there, that final EIR, as Lisa mentioned, will go back to planning commission. Again, another chance for the community to come and make their comment as well as the planning commission. And then finally, it'll get taken to the city council.
It ends at planning commission.
It ends, I'm sorry. Okay. Typically, it ends at council. Thank you, Lisa. All right, I wanted to stress also what is so valuable about the scoping process in terms of SEQA. What's really important now is to hear from you about what you'd like to see addressed in the EIR. It isn't so much about the merits of the project. You'll have, absolutely have a chance to, to address those comments through the city process, but what's important to us is that we find out from you what you'd like to see addressed in the EIR, the technical issues, an intersection that you have issues about that you'd really like to see assessed. Do you have ideas about alternatives to evaluate? And again, you need to focus, or you should focus on the potential environmental impacts of the project, not so much on the merits of the project. And, and that's not because we're not interested in that. It's because it'll help us create a stronger EIR. Process of doing so, our scoping period ends April 1st, and as Lisa also mentioned, you can make oral comments at tonight's hearing, submit a comment card. And if you want to also, you can use regular mail and send your comments to Lisa. There's an address up there, or email Lisa with a specific subject line of 806. And all those comments will be integrated into the EIR process as long as they're received by April 1st. I'll leave you again with that list of contacts, all of which we're here to help answer questions, Lisa, Tricia, and I. And we are all supporting the SEQA process of disclosure and transparency, so please keep in touch with questions. That's all I have for you. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions? Any questions from the commission of the applicants or their staff?
Are we allowed to mention areas of concern that we weren't brought up by the next EIR meeting? Are we waiting till public speaks?
Commissioner Berkman, can you repeat the question, and I think I'll have Lisa Costa-Sanders answer that.
Okay. At this point, can we ask about specific things? We have concerns over here. Should we wait till the public speaks? I don't want answers, but I just want to raise concerns.
Yeah, you can do that now.
Okay. I have a couple major concerns, and it has to do with transportation, circulation, coming down off the hill onto San Carlos Avenue. And then the other one is emergency access. It doesn't seem like there's a lot of ins and outs to that area. So those are the two, those are two of my main concerns that I'd like to see more information on when we get the SEQA report.
Okay, since there's a large crowd here today and a lot of people want to speak, we want to make sure that everyone has that opportunity. So if you haven't already and you want to speak, please fill out one of these forms back in the desk in the corner and bring it up to one of us. Also, we're going to have to limit each speaker to two minutes. Otherwise, we'll be here till midnight, and none of you want to wait that long either. So we'll rely on you getting your message across in the most effective way that you can offer it. And also, you need to come up, up front when you talk, face us, introduce yourself and where you live.
Through the chair, I'd just like to assist some people that are standing in the back of the room. If there's an empty seat next to you, can you please raise your hand, and then maybe somebody in the back of the room can come join you and be a little more comfortable? I know we have three up here. Come on up. Don't make the fire marshal kick you out. We also have an overflow room upstairs, so if we're too full, we're going to need to send people to another room. So I'd appreciate if you don't mind coming in and having a seat. That'd really help us out. Thank you.
Couple of seats up here, yeah. Thank you. The first slip I have is The first slip I have is for Mr. David Crabbe. Representing the Sierra Club.
Yes, good evening. Yes, I'm representing the Sierra Club tonight. Next, we have two other members of the, of the club, and we're going to try to break this up a little bit. I'll do a little bit, and they'll do a little bit. We sent you a letter. Sorry it got you late today, but I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not. But I thought we should, I should kind of quickly review it for the group in the, here and on TV. So our concerns about this were, one thing was fire danger, which I noticed that they've added to the EIR, which is great. We had some specifics about that in terms of, we evaluate the fire risk from the land use changes, select new plantings for the fire, for fire resistance, and provide defensible space between the new and existing planting for fire safety. Underground, all the electric lines, we would like to certainly see that. And also eliminate gas lines on the property because they're a potential fire source. And we've heard that the, they're going to go all-electric on this project, so that might be, in fact, 100% feasible to do that. And it's actually the direction that the, the state of California is heading, that a residential project is supposed to be net-zero energy by 2020. So all-electric is one way to do that. We also are concerned about the second, at least the second emergency egress, which Shannon has already asked about, and we concur, concur with her, that's an issue. And then we thought that the community room might be designed to function as an emergency shelter, just in case there were a problem there. The second thing we had here was mitigations for greenhouse gas emissions. And again, the all-electric development is fine, preferably with solar panels, renewable power. We looked at, would like to see alternatives for fossil fuel burning vehicles as much as possible, considering this is a suburban site. Some onsite bike and scooter share, maybe electric-powered multi-passenger shuttles or something to that effect, so there isn't quite as much traffic coming off of that hill. And then finally, in my portion of this, just comply with transportation demand management, which is maybe a little tricky with this, but we'll give you a try. So that's, that's the first half of our letter. Another person will, will continue that. Thank you.
Next is Astia, initial M. That's all I have. Oh, okay. Or is it Austin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I will keep it brief. I know that there are many people here tonight that want to get their issues addressed. On the agenda, a few things that stood out to me were the aesthetics, energy production, population, housing, and parks and recreation. It was mentioned earlier that a small section will be communal housing. That total space allotment would pale in comparison to the total amount of land utilized in this project, which is, according to the Dragonfly Project website, over 100,000 feet, I believe, total. Additionally, as far as aesthetically pleasing, I find that the architecture definitely stands out like a sore thumb in comparison to the other homes nearby, and what is also indicative of the small-town San Carlos aesthetic. Finally, although they are allocating a good portion of that land to be used as a communal park and for other recreational activity, I find that the amount of land being allocated is inadequate. And my fear is that if they do, in fact, gain access to the property next to this one, and they do decide to add an additional 60 or so units, we're going to see quite, quite a lot of property and very little land that can be usable. Additionally, on the Dragonfly website, they indicate that they orient the facility to incentivize residents to take public transit or walk slash bike. However, I question that there will be 180 parking spaces at this facility. To me, if you were incentivizing people to walk and bike, you would not have that many parking spots. But that's all I really wanted to address, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I live at 136 Northam. I drive by there all the time. I'm all in favor of multi-unit dense dwellings on Alameda, not on Alameda, on El Camino downtown. I think that's great. I, I think redeveloping those areas are fine. But this area, as you can see from the map, is nothing but single-family homes, and this project would completely change the character of San Carlos, and I'm just deeply opposed to, to doing this. I'd also like to mention, for anybody who likes to cook, you can't cook on an electric stove properly. You really need gas.
I'll tell my wife that. Next, Chet Moore.
Good evening. Try to keep this really brief. We could have bought the land, didn't get the popular support to do it. Developer owns it. Developer has a right to develop it within the R6 coating that it has. It could be single-family detached. Nothing is stopping that. But if there is one, I think overarching concern is going to be density. And that concern feeds issues such as ingress and egress onto Alameda de los Pulgas, which is already, when that is open space, is horrendous, particularly given that arch going over. Secondly, you've got a choke point at the entrance. All it takes is for the electricity to go out, stoplights quit working, and I've been trapped out in Redwood Shores when you couldn't, when Holly and Ralston were blocked. There is no way in or out except through that choke point. It is rumored that there are fire trails and other, call it auxiliary access, running up into the western corner. If that is there, that needs to be addressed in the EIR. How are fire engines, ambulances, EMTs going to be able to get into the upper reaches of this particular project? That's a $10,000, a 10,000 cubic foot offload for fill. Does that include trenching for gas, which we're not going to have, electricity, trenching for the foundations? They're talking about just creating the building pad, but how about all the other dirt? And where's it going to go? I think the city, in my era on this bench, used to advocate for a balanced fill project wherever we went, and you didn't off-haul unless it was absolutely necessary. Safety, more than anything, I think is going to be the concern as a result of the density on this project. If you cut it down to half, hmm, might be interesting. Or, given the slope density requirements, and keeping in mind you have that other block spot up there, going to single-family detached. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Thank you. My name is Gerald Solberg at 145 Vista del Grande. The, as has been said, the, this was a park election. Has it failed? It's been going to be developed by two developers. And I would think that a EIR for both developments would be in order, but maybe separate ones are required. As a resident of Vista del Grande for 35 years, I'm well aware of the problems of A major concern that I have is that the Vista del Grande property is landlocked by Dragonfly and streets that are narrow, steep, and curvy. Madera Avenue and Vista del Grande. The streets can only handle traffic in one direction if cars are parked. And if they are parked there, you have to wait to get around. The Vista del Grande project will overdouble the traffic on these streets. Construction traffic would be overwhelming. The only solution to solve this problem is to have interconnection between the Vista del Grande project and the Dragonfly project. These connections will also allow traffic flow for medical, fire, and road closings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I live on Carmelita Drive and was San Carlos resident for about 13 years. I witnessed firsthand the results of construction that affect the storm drain and sewer systems, especially in the area of Britton Acres, where the offflow will be, will be contributed to by this development. Right now, the storm drains are inadequate. We experience yard and garage flooding on portions of Carmelita. In addition, we've made numerous attempts for intervention from the city with regard to this over 10 years. We've submitted multiple emails, photographs, and videotapes, which show the inadequate storm gutters and the storm runoff. These two projects are within a half a mile of Pulgas Creek. All the construction, water that will run off to it runs to the creek. Two recent events have negatively affected the community in which I live, especially my, my street, and we are meeting with public works directors and the city manager about this. For example, on high-level property, the water should be retained on-site and not drained on the property below. San Mateo County has guidelines for drainage review, but we found out that those are only guidelines and that San Carlos does not follow those guidelines. It allows top-level dwelling places to have dry wells that pump water up the hill and drain it. And it shouldn't even allow that because what if the electricity fails and the pumps that take the water up the hill to drain into the street? If those fail, then that can flood the downslope property. Number two, if, and that was on 70702 Noel Avenue, that's where that occurred. The other thing that's going on now in one lot on Cordilleras, 742 Cordilleras, go by there and look at that site. The new thing the city's allowing now is basement construction. And they will allow during the no-dig moratorium for basements to be dug. Right now, you will see during the rainy weather, water pumps pumping out water into the street, overwhelming the storm drain and dumping right into Pulgas Creek. So my objections are related to the environmental hydrology and water quality for the developers of this. If you're going to develop it, the city should at a minimum, per the San Mateo County guidelines, provide a means of adequate access for maintenance, adequate drainage facilities provided to protect the proposed development, and existing downstream development. So if the existing storm drainage is inadequate as it is now, and you're going to tie in this many more units, where all that water is going to come downhill and then eventually wash into Pulgas Creek, then what are we going to do when that affects our properties? So for the purpose of preserving future litigation for any of us here who may be affected by it, the opposition is, number one, there is inadequate storm drainage as it exists now to handle the additional water runoff from these projects. Number two, the sewer system as it exists now is inadequate as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners and staff, my name is Lou Boris. I live at 1828 Carmelita Drive on a cul-de-sac down in the end there. I have to second everything that Debbie said. I live just a couple doors away from her, and I'm the one at the end of the street where we have one drain. All the water comes around, down Cordilleras Drive, turns the corner on Carmelita, comes down the right-hand side, goes right into that thing right next to my garage, and it floods the garage all the time. Now, you know, I don't, we've dealt with this thing, and I've dealt with it. I've lived on that, in that house for over 56 years, well, 56 years this year. And I, I don't know, I mean, this, this project is, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, as I say, the storm drains are inadequate now to bring more water down there and, and overload that creek, because I'm on the side where the creek is. And I've sent in pictures, and you guys have them down here, of when that water is coming down that street down there, we have a 18-inch corrugated pipe that goes from that drain next to my driveway out to the creek, and that thing will shoot out about three feet into the creek full circle. I mean, I'm not talking about half of the thing. That thing is coming down. So we have water coming down one way, and then in front of my house is the only one that has gutters there, so we have some water coming there, some water coming the other way, and it gets, it comes this way up in the air, and then it comes down my driveway. So any more water coming down there, I mean, I've definitely opposed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Murphy, or Murray, sorry.
I'm Doug Murray, and I live at, currently at 936 Heather Drive, which adjacent to the property of Black Mountain Spring Water Company, which used to be called the Three Sisters Ranch. Anyway, I also lived at 1892 Carmelita, and I know what Lou is talking about. We do not need a lot of water going down to the lower houses. My main concern was one that I brought up with the developer about their access to Alameda, which we all know is very busy during the morning and the evening rush hour. Growing up here for 40 some years, we, we remember when it was no traffic, but now they, they should have a signal light at that exit. The crosswalk is not adequate. What are you going to do, run your wife across to stop cars? I don't know. Anyway, I think the developer should pay for it, not us taxpayers, because it's going to be evident that a traffic light will be needed there. Also, the other thing would be, I concur with everybody, everything that's been said before about the density and the, we always thought we would be looking down at nice million-dollar, now two- or three-million-dollar homes, not a complex of buildings. And I still don't quite understand how a group of buildings can be classified as single-family homes. Even though they're single-family units, they aren't single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Another representative from the Sierra Club, Dr. Blatteri. Another representative from the Sierra Club, Dr. Votteri. We'll come back. No one I know, Votteri? Oh.
I'm a resident of San Carlos for the past 46 years. I was here before there was gridlock on Melundy. I was here. Now, when I look at your plot, I see Paradise. I'm talking about Paradise, California campfire. Why do I recognize that? Because I had a house in Paradise, and it was designed exactly like this. There's only one way out, and there are cul-de-sacs. So if a fire breaks out on the east end of this, you may as well kiss it off. You're not getting out of there. So to suggest that you have a plot like this when San Carlos is designated as one of the highest-risk fire areas. Why is this similar to Paradise? Because it has a steep slope, and it is now a cul-de-sac. And the wind is going to sweep right down that area and wipe everybody out. Now, I live on Melundy, and 42 years ago, the bombers from CAL FIRE flew right over my house down into Devonshire Canyon. I took my son out to show him, he was two years old, he was terrified. And the fire department comes to our neighbors because they have a flat roof so that they can direct CAL FIRE when they dive into this canyon. So you are producing Paradise in San Carlos. Number one, fire risk. Number two, traffic congestion. We already have gridlock on Melundy. All the cars going to school, and you're now proposing hundreds of cars that will be coming out of this area, and they will have to go, and if they're bringing children, they'll have to be going up Melundy Drive. Why can't you have children walking to school out of the west end of this development? I thought that San Carlos was supposed to be the town of healthy living, in which we are going to have access for bicycles, for people walking. And here you are developing a unit that is nothing but traffic flow. I also happen to be a cyclist. Now, there's a cycling lane. Now you're going to have people driving out. How are they going to go north? They're going to have to cross over two bike lanes to head north, tremendously endangering people. If children were to try to walk to school, they would have to walk along Alameda, very busy street, then up Melundy, also very busy street, as opposed to walking out of the west end of this development. So anyway, with the interest of trying to save lives, because I'm a physician, and that was my duty to save lives, I'm here to save a few lives and to share with you the experience of my house that burned down in Paradise.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, through the chair, I would just like to make a comment. I would like to ask the community members present here tonight to refrain from clapping and booing. Our goal is to really create a welcoming environment for all to speak regardless of opinion. So thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Senovi Brechenholz? Welcome.
I live on 165 Glasgow Lane, and very adjacent to this new development. So my concerns are simple. The EIR has to include both developments. We cannot piecemeal it. Okay? All the impacts on environment, on traffic, all the very good points of a raise here that should be in that environmental report, both developments have to be considered. Okay? So specifically, we are concerned with hill stability because this land was considered unstable, to the best of my knowledge. Okay? And of course, traffic, but this was already discussed many times. We will add 300 cars to already a bad situation. Okay? So all these items I'd like to bring up to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bonnie McClure. Also speaking for the Sierra Club.
Under mitigations for storm drainage, we'd like you to study, thank you. Probably would rather not listen to me, so. Study how the proposed development will alter the natural drainage of the watershed in light of fire danger within the wildlife urban interface. And also, the design entire site for the low-impact development, which uses natural landscaping and permeable paving for onsite drainage rather than piping the storm drains to meet the requirements. So I hope that you will note that along with the Carmelita residents' remarks. And then about the source of water, use the storm water detention system for landscape irrigation to reduce dependence on municipal water supplies. And also recycle all gray water on the site for landscape use. And of course, with waste reduction, compost on the site. So for site usage for part of the landscape plan. So in other words, make this a renewable project. Just water with what you've got there. And I hope that you will consider that this is a, this is a development that we worked hard to pass a park issue for this. And let's make it as best we can. So please, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Camille King.
Hi, I live at 150 Madera, so I have a very vested interest in the traffic issues that are going to follow from this development. I really agree with previous speakers who say that we need to look at both developments together because the traffic impact is going to be a combined impact. They have to be connected, you know, one way in and out is just not a feasible solution. And I know that we're working on fire impacts with CAL water and some of the, but it's, the whole fire egress and ingress issue is big. Madera, for those of you who don't go up to that side of the Alameda, is barely a two-way street, no sidewalks, no streetlights, no curbs. And as a previous speaker has said, if there's a car parked, somebody has to wait because the UPS truck and the USPS truck can't both pass on Madera if there's a car parked there. So the traffic impacts of the joint development, I think, really have to be considered together and not independently of each other. And just for, once again, I would encourage you, if you don't know that neighborhood, to just drive up there because the Vista del Grande property, which we're not even talking about yet, you know, will by definition dump onto Vista del Grande Coronado or some way. And you can't, like, I was coming up Madera from the Alameda last week following a fire truck, and there's a very sharp left-hand turn off of Madera onto Vista del Grande. The fire truck couldn't do it in one turn. They had to do kind of a three-point turn. So the traffic implications of all those extra houses and the traffic and the safety, combined with the fire dangers, I think are very, very important to consider together. Thanks.
Thank you. Elvira Monroe. Welcome.
I come before you as a longtime resident of San Carlos, 63-year resident, actually since 1956. So I have seen a lot. I stand here as a resident committed to safeguarding the character of San Carlos and preserving our proximity to open areas for habitat and wildlife connectivity. As the development plans progress, I urge you to keep in mind the protection of the ridges and waterways and the forested areas, to do a thorough biological and hydrological evaluation, to work with the Corps of Engineers about the wetlands, to explore the offering of easements to connecting trails. Thank you for listening, and I hope acting.
Thank you. Tom Philidi.
I'm Tom Philidi. My wife and I have been living in San Carlos up on Shelford Avenue by Arguello Park for 25 years now. What I haven't heard anybody discuss so far, in addition to the things I have agreed with regarding traffic and fire safety, are the trees that are going to be removed. There's a great many protected trees that are going to be taken out. And I'd like to see in the environmental impact report some mention of how the trees are going to be disposed of and what the carbon footprint impact of that is going to be, as well as the fact that the trees aren't going to be there anymore to absorb carbon dioxide and how that's going to affect the community overall. The other thing I'd like to ask the environmental impact report to conclude is some study of alternatives to transportation in two specific areas. One of them is for schoolchildren because I presume that a great number of the folks that are going to move into this development are going to be young couples with children that want to attend our very fine schools here in San Carlos. And so what alternatives can there be for transporting them to school, including liaison with safe routes to schools and other programs like that? The second one is for some sort of commuter shuttle that would take residents of this complex down to the transit center that is down there in San Carlos, the train station itself, rather than having them use their cars. So those are the concerns I'd like to see addressed. Thank you.
And thank you. Devon Angel.
Hi, thank you for scheduling, organizing this meeting to give us an opportunity to express our concerns. We've lived at 28 Vista del Grande, we've owned our home there for 10 years. And what we really love about the neighborhood is it's a very friendly neighborhood. Our children can walk in the streets, they can walk to school, they ride their bikes, they can go to, we send them down the street to our neighbor's house for playdates, and we just text each other when they get there. And we have a neighborhood block party that one of our wonderful neighbors down the street, Velvet Snow, organizes for the last 10 years. Large attendance, the whole neighborhood gets together. And so real concerns about the impact on certainly the high density and the traffic, and whether our children will be safe walking to school. Right now, they can walk to school, bike to school with their friends. And this last year, when we had the construction on the water drains and a lot of construction in the neighborhood, the city parked a lot of their construction vehicles in that large area at the top of Vista del Grande there, the old greenhouse. And when that construction was going on, these trucks took out our mailboxes. Recently, a car was hit that was parked on the street. We've just had a lot of damage, trees, you know, taken down by these big trucks. But, you know, most significantly, they just took out our mailboxes one day when we were like walking down our driveway. So this is what we foresee the future could be when all this construction starts. And certainly, I'm opposed to this high density. I think single-family homes would be much better if we have to build something there. Certainly, all these people are going to have friends come over, family visit, and where are those people going to park? They can't really park along the Alameda there, so they're going to park up on our streets in Vista del Grande that are very narrow and already, you know, very dangerous to traffic. So I don't think they can really take a lot more traffic. Thanks a lot for listening.
And thank you for your comments. Dennis O'Malley.
First off, thanks to the residents who have been here for 50 years and created a great San Carlos town and community. It's fantastic. I'm Dennis O'Malley. I live in 120 Dundee Lane, which is a little bit above, you can kind of see it's cut off. I'm a 19-year San Carlos resident. I'm a former San Carlos business owner that brought 40 high-paying jobs in San Carlos. What I want to be abundantly clear, because I heard there's a notion of rumors and a notion of is this possible or not? There is no scenario in which there will be any access at all from Dundee Lane into that development. There won't be a walking trail, there won't be a biking trail, there won't be a fire access trail, there won't be an easement, there won't be a road. And living in that house for 12 years, people don't know how to use Google Maps and Apple Maps because they go to the end of the street and they do a three-point turn, and they park there because they want to go to the park. Kids park there because they want to hang out and they think it's an empty spot. Guarantee you to what the person just had said, if I'm young families, I'm having birthday parties, I'm having everything else, people are going to get lost, they're going to park in other places. I'm all for private property and a development. But if there's any notion of that there's another way to access that, those properties, I can tell you right now, that was not going to happen.
Next is Alan Blizai. Welcome.
Basically, everything I was concerned about has been said, and some. My major concern was traffic and the high density. And I heard more concerns tonight, and I've agreed with all of the concerns. And so I just want to reiterate that I think both parcels got to be considered together. Because, I mean, that's only half the issue. I think the issues are going to more than double once the other parcel, especially if you're talking high density there as well. I think the issue's just more than double. So I mean, the, both developments got to be considered together in that impact report. That's my comment.
Thank you, Alan. Wyatt Dent.
So you said there were 68 condos up there, roughly four people per family in the American nation? So 68 times four is around 250. And that means around 1% of the population in San Carlos will increase, meaning more cars, more people. And my parents are always talking about how Laurel Street is really crowded. So I don't think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Wyatt. Next, Amy Walthaway? Hathaway, sorry.
Evening again. My name is Amy Hathaway, and I live at 181 Glasgow Lane. I'm here tonight to voice concerns regarding the overall number of condos proposed by this project, as well as the adjacent project, and all totaling over 140 units. Although this property and all the surrounding areas technically zoned for six units per acre, that density is not keeping in with the character of all the surrounding neighborhoods, which are single-family homes built at about three homes per acre, or about half of the condo units proposed. This means that sometime in the past, when the surrounding neighborhoods were approved and built, the past developers, the past planning commissions, and the past city councils all agreed that single-family homes at three homes per acre was a good thing for the hills in San Carlos. And indeed, these are nice neighborhoods because of those decisions. The condominium project proposed is simply too many units, and frankly, they're very ugly, in my opinion. In addition to being out of place and an eyesore to the existing residents, the higher density will be a problem with higher environmental impact, as well as a loss of quality of life. will be a problem with higher environmental impact, as well as a loss of quality of life. Major concerns include higher traffic and parking, the removal of 260 trees, including 127 heritage trees, impacts to the natural plant and animal species, impacts to the watershed and former creek and existing spring, noise impacts, air quality impacts, impact to our schools, impacts to the water supply and other resources, any cultural resources, including Native American resources. Other very specific concerns include the three-plus-story height of the condos are too tall, putting roof decks on the condos are effectively a four-story, an exterior living level that may be very close to the surrounding homes and does not work, the small setback from the condos to the property lines, nine of the condos are about 15 to 20 feet away from the property lines, the extreme grading instability of the hillside, the lack of affordable housing provided within the development, the financial ability of the developer, and the track record of the developer for a project of this size and scope. We ask the city staff, planning commission, and council seriously study this proposal and consider the cumulative impact of the adjacent 12 acres by another developer when looking at this area. More responsible proposals and development of single-family homes would likely be received much better from the existing San Carlos residents. Keep the San Carlos Hills single-family and put the density where it belongs, which is near transit. Thank you.
And thank you. John Levinson.
Hi. My name is John Levinson. I've lived in San Carlos on Wessex Way since 1971. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience. And one of the things I'm most concerned with about the change in character of San Carlos. I look around, I drive on El Camino, I drive in several streets, and I see multi-unit buildings being built. The problem that I have with this particular project is, and I will confess that I was one of the people who worked in on having this declared a park, which of course we lost that particular vote. But one of the problems that I have is that it has one entrance to the Alameda. I drive on the Alameda, and most times it's fairly busy with traffic, there aren't enough traffic lights, et cetera, and traffic control is very minimum. It's interesting also for me at the Alameda, those of you who've been on it lately have noticed as you drive on the Alameda, on the cliff side of the Alameda, there's a huge topolin along the way. Now, I'm not a hydrologist or a soil engineer, but I have to believe the reason that's there is to prevent from that part of the hill getting too wet, which certainly would impact the roadway at the Alameda. And that's a very big concern for me, because I don't want to see that collapse. And obviously, the people who make those decisions in the city don't want to see that happen either. And those of us who worked on the park vote sort of halfway predicted that this would happen if we lost the vote. So I urge the committee to look at this very, very carefully. And if they do decide to go ahead with it, to make sure there is more than one entrance to the Alameda or more than one way to get in and out of this development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sandy Altous.
My name's Sandy Altous. I've lived here about a total of 40 years. I grew up and then came back to raise my family with my husband. And I live on Magnolia Avenue. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but when the gentleman who presented the, you know, the basics of the EIR said that there were going to be over 200 trees removed and maybe around 160 live oaks removed, that's when I said I have to get up. Because the number of trees that are being taken out in San Carlos is ridiculous. We lost all the eucalyptus trees, well, a lot of them. And I walk a lot in the city, and I see trees come down all the time. And I know they're supposed to be replanted, but I am certain that the majority of the ones I see, they're not going to have any substitute come in. So my question is, as I'm looking at the live oak on our city logo here, what can be done to try to keep more of these heritage trees in place? It's ridiculous that there... It's not a place for high density. I just don't think the middle of town is the place for high-density living. But anything you can do to save as many trees as possible, those live oaks especially, would be greatly appreciated. And that's... And I just want to add one other thing. San Carlos is the only city on the peninsula from Burlingame all the way down to San Jose that is not part of the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA program. The only city. And I think that's something that we should look into and not something to be proud of. I think we should change that and work on our canopy of trees here.
Thank you for those comments. I didn't know that. It looks like Brian Tracy. Someone that lives at 160 Vista del Grande. Quite sure it's Brian. Maybe he had to go home. Is there anyone else who didn't turn in one of these that would like to speak? You can speak now, but we would ask that you fill one of these out after you speak. Come up, please, ma'am. And welcome.
Thank you. Hi. I'm Diane Levinson, and I also live on Wessex Way for 47 years. And I'm really concerned about the schools because I know that they're pretty much impacted the way they are. And so I just, you know, don't know how we're going to accommodate all these children. And these are the kind of units that are going to be sold to families with kids. And besides the fact of how are they going to get to school and get home safely, which is a big issue, I don't know where they're going to have a place for them in the classrooms. And as it is, we have an excellent reputation. Everybody wants to live in San Carlos because of the schools. I meet people like that all the time. And somebody wants to buy into my street right now, and there's 15 bids on the house. And most of it is because they have kids that they want to go to our schools. And, you know, they're good because they have low class density, and everybody's very happy to teach in them. And I have grandkids in them. So I know what this situation is, and I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hello, sir.
Hello. My name's Tom G. I'm on Glasgow Lane. Basically, Amy has given you a lot of documentation of this project. This project is way too dense for the area. And everybody's given you a lot of things, water, things like that, traffic. So you have to ask yourself, would you live in this development? Each and one of you on this committee, would you buy in here and live in here? It's way oversized, too dense, and you have to remember, if the glove doesn't fit, you must acquit.
I guess we should end on that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? That's a hard act to follow. Yes, sir. Come on up. Both, you're first.
My name's Tyrone Nakahara. I live at 885 Bauer Drive, which is directly overlooks this new development. Yeah, a lot of my concerns have been already stated. But the main thing is, I don't know... I looked at some of the drawings. It's unclear for me how this is going to affect my view, because I have a view that looks right... I'm like at the house right on the UC Bauer Drive there, like right underneath the name, the street name, that's where my house is. And then I do think, looking at the drawings, I do agree with like, this doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood at all, like all of us, single-family homes, this like, it doesn't... I think it's going to really change how it looks there and feels. And so I think having other single-family detached homes would fit better, not this high-density housing that will really change how this neighborhood feels. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Burrows.
Good evening, and thank you for listening. I have been a resident of San Carlos for about 25 years. My concern is related to the fact that so many multifamily units have already, are already under construction, that we have not yet, as a community, even had an opportunity to experience the impact of the units already in progress. And to think about another 68 plus 60 in the second phase by a second developer is pretty frightening, actually. I'm wondering the extent to which, you know, we have really, really looked at the impact of the infrastructure. Someone mentioned the storm drains and sewers that are already exceptionally old and inadequate. The roadways and the parking impact. And, you know, we've got lots of projects in process, and so we haven't even begun to feel that. So the fact that we are proposing another 128 units with everybody having two to three vehicles per unit, it's a scary, it's a scary thing. So just to think about the tree situation in terms of the number of trees taken out and the air quality that is automatically impacted by the removal of trees. And then also pedestrian and bike safety, which we all have had the opportunity to observe and experience, more importantly, the fact that everybody's stressed for success and everybody's driving a little more aggressively than they used to. And it is really pretty risk-taking to be a pedestrian or a cyclist. So I just would, would hope that there be opportunity to, to consider both projects together, to slow things down, and to honor the neighborhood, which has been a beautiful area that embraced outdoor space as opposed to dense multifamily units. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I have one more slip here for Jeff Pepper. There he is. Hi, Jeff.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak after the standard comment period. I agree with many of the things that were said here tonight, and I don't want to reiterate them. You've heard many of them multiple times. The one thing that was only briefly mentioned, and I wanted to mention again to bring to your attention, is the noise associated with the development. We live on Glasgow, been a family there for 25 years, and we hear the announcements at St. Charles down the hill, even farther down there. It's actually quite loud. To put in 120, 30-odd units there with families there, with rooftop living on top and parties going on there, that's going to be quite an impact on noise. And I just wanted to mention that as an additional factor.
Okay. Thank you for that. Last chance. Anyone else need to speak?
My name is Ford. I live on 935 Alameda. I guess my thought was the three-story for the proposal for these townhouses, is there currently a restriction to three-story single-home developments in San Carlos? That was my understanding, that there's trying to limit the kind of super-large houses and super-large townhouses. That, and also perhaps an independent evaluation for all the concerns that people raised tonight. Thank you.
There's another speaker? Oh. Okay. Go ahead.
One thing that we haven't discussed tonight is the seismic impact. The reason this stuff, I believe, is up for sale. This used to be the Black Mountain Properties, which had a spring on it that was a business. And after one of the earthquakes, it stopped functioning the way that it needed to, to continue the business. And I may or may not be right on this, this is my understanding of the history. So my concern is seismically, what's going on there? I want to make sure it's safe.
Since there are no more speakers, entertain closing the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing period.
A second, Dan.
Oops. Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you.
I can just make one comment before you start your comments, if you don't mind. I just want to clarify that although I did indicate there's two separate development projects, this one has submitted the formal application, the other one, Vista del Grande, is still in the conceptual stage. We will be able to analyze it under the cumulative analysis section of the EIR, so that will be included in the, in the analysis. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Lisa, could you just explain that a bit more? Does that mean that an assumption will be made that there'll be 68 other properties developed adjacent?
Correct.
Okay.
I thank all the speakers for coming up and giving us your opinions, whether it's support or in opposition. A lot of important aspects were raised by you, and we take them very seriously. We represent you as citizens of our community, and it is the city of good living. I've lived in two places in this city for 37 years now, and when I outgrew one condominium and found another one, I wanted to stay in San Carlos because it's not only the city of good living, I believe it's the city of good government. I've followed it for years, and I'm honored to be a part of it. Thank you.
A question...
Yes.
Yeah, a question for Lisa. The comments from the public tonight, you've noted all of them, and they'll be referred back in with our consultants to make sure that they're, they're being addressed. You know, there's just a really rich list of questions, so you've, you've got them, yes? Great.
Yeah. And they'll be summarized in the document itself, the scoping hearing tonight.
Great. Thank you, Greg.
As well as any comments that come in before April 1st, written or emailed.
I think the... Is there a view on how you're going to work the traffic studies and the impact on Alameda, and also particularly the impact of that number of 120 vehicles coming in and out of properties? And like, how do you look at that? And maybe you could talk a bit about that, because that, that is a big deal.
Yeah. My name is Steve Nowak. I'm a principal with Placeworks and the principal in charge on this project. We do have a traffic consultant that will be looking at, doing a traffic impact assessment that will look at existing conditions plus conditions with the project on a network of intersections surrounding the site. And they'll do a full evaluation, looking at current conditions as well as long-term cumulative conditions. So it's a very comprehensive evaluation, and it includes all aspects of multi- So it's a very comprehensive evaluation, and it includes all aspects of multimodal safety as well.
Okay, and one of the speakers raised an important point about sightlines on Alameda in that space, both with the slope and the curve. Will those kinds of things be taken into consideration?
They'll be looking at sightlines for ingress and egress out of the, the site.
Question for you again. Yeah, so as you look at those parking impacts, like, what does that actually look like? What does that mean? Does it then imply recommendations that, you know, a, a traffic light would be required, or a three-way stop, or like, how does, how does your study or the traffic consultant study get, get trans, inform what Public Works does with the problem?
Well, along with all of the other areas we'll be studying, the environmental impact report, the traffic impact assessment, will include a series of mitigation measures that would provide recommendations for the city to adopt, and those would be either, and they would specifically call out who would be responsible for implementing, who's responsible for funding, the timing, et cetera.
I see, and those would include specific traffic measures if called for? Okay, thank you.
Is it possible for me to ask you a question? What is the number four on the diagram, 30%? That's the corner of my property right there.
Those are just the numbers for each cluster of houses to show it.
Is it a clarification, because the public comment session is closed?
I have a question for the gentleman who just spoke. I was just curious, is the traffic report paid for by the developer, or is it just like a mutual policy?
I can answer that. So the city has retained the SEQA consultant, Placeworks, as well as the traffic consultant. The city is responsible for that contract. We've selected that firm, and we pay the bill, but it's reimbursed by the developer. They are not able to communicate directly with the SEQA consultant. All communication goes through the city.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I do have some comments. Is there anything else?
Go ahead.
Okay. The, this is a significant project, and we're looking at half of it. I certainly understand the public's concern about a large development that, you know, has some appearance of, of higher density than elsewhere. The, I also share the concern about the piecemeal development aspect of two projects coming together, and whether that really gives us a holistic view of this. I'm glad to hear the environmental review will assume the second project comes in, and is that, is that just one section of a lengthy environmental report, or does that assumption, will that carry through all the various aspects?
So the way we look at cumulative effects, we have a section that discusses the, what we're looking at for the cumulative picture. It may not just include the adjacent project, it could include any other development that's occurring within a reasonable proximity of the site. And in each of the topic areas that you saw at the beginning, we discuss the cumulative impacts within that section of the EIR. So it's divided by topic, by environmental topic.
Okay, okay, so that assumption basically gets carried through and considered?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
John, sorry, great question, and maybe for staff, just to build. When we go through the entitlements process, will we be thinking about these as one project, or if one, then two, or if only one? I mean, how, how are we going to work our way through this?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner. Well, we really can't assume that the other development project is going through, just like it was in tandem with this particular project. It could be years before that other, theoretically, before the other project comes forward. And state legislation, there's a thing called the State Streamlining Act and the Subdivision Map Act, so the state puts certain limitations on cities in terms of processing times, fair development processing times. And so we can't say to this developer, hey, we're going to hold you up for a couple of years and wait and see what happens. So the, the state requires a city to make reasonable efforts to review a development project, and so those are the, some of the constraints that the city would be working within. But as noted by the consultant and, and other staff, we'll try and look at it holistically and in a cumulative way, but we can't do a full-blown EIR on the other project, because we don't know exactly, unless it does come in in short order, we wouldn't know the specific characteristics of that particular development in its, as a whole. So we'll do the best we can with a cumulative impact analysis.
Thank you.
So I, I do share the concern there, of course. It is hard to think of a piecemeal, two piecemeal developments coming together as a cohesive neighborhood, and that's, that's, that's a general concern I have. And I certainly have heard the public that, you know, there is, you know, I'm a longtime resident of San Carlos, there is concern about development and density and additional growth in town. And I've only been in this chair for, I don't know, seven, eight months, and, you know, the thing is, this is zoned for housing, so it's unlikely that this commission will be able to say no to it outright. So it, in my view, my thinking on this is really to, to, to slightly go in a different direction and be like, hey, you know, if this will come through the process, and there aren't too many ways to just say no to it, then what, what should a new neighborhood in San Carlos look like? You know, what, what should the Black Mountain neighborhood be? We might not ever see another new neighborhood in our town, and I think it's incumbent on all of us to, you know, think about the two projects, how they would come together, and what elements a new neighborhood in town should have. And we could get, you know, kind of hung up on, we don't want it, we don't want anything like that. But then I think kind of the piecemeal process will, you know, that crank will turn, and we'll end up with something approved that might not represent a holistic collective thought. So I guess I would like my fellow commissioners to really help me think through, help all of us think through what, you know, a new neighborhood in San Carlos consisting of over 100 new units should look like, and what components should it have? And, you know, this is an initial scoping session, so if there are other elements that a neighborhood should consider or have, I think we have to identify it by April 1st, in any event, for it to be considered as part of the study.
It took years to get the transit village through this process, so I, I'm not in any hurry to, to, to have this go the way it looks, because there are so many things about this that would need to be rectified before I...
I'm actually not sure that's entirely the case in that this is not a planned development, and that's why it won't, you know, as slated, it won't go before the city council. So in fact, I believe the developer, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is being done right on the permissible entitlement in a way that it will be a relatively streamlined process. And that causes me concern, because I, I do want us to pause and consider holistically what a new neighborhood like this really should contain, and make sure we're thinking about it fully, because it isn't a planned development. As I understand it, this developer was initially considering a planned development, and that would have allowed for higher density on one hand, but on the other hand, the city would have had more leeway to ask for things like public parks and such, and it's a longer process, as you say. And I, you know, staff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, you know, this will be maybe the most useful thing, staff, what would the likely aggregate timeline look like as far, you know, that report comes back, modifications get made? I mean, would they, you know, could they break ground in a year? Would it be two years? Like, what does this tend to look like?
The EIR, the close of the period is April 1st, and it'll be, it's probably at least another two months or possibly 10 weeks at least, until we are able to put the admin draft together for review for city staff. There's, there are a lot of pieces that still have to be put together in order for us to move forward on it, so.
Sure.
So that would be the minimum, looking at a, possibly a circulation date in, you know, mid to late summer, I would say, for the draft EIR, something along those lines.
Okay. And Steve, if you could just talk about timelines, isn't, aren't there public timelines for review and that kind of thing?
For the 45-day public review period, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a 45-day period?
Right.
And then, then we would come back with comments and that kind of thing?
Correct, so we'll release the draft EIR, and then there will be a 45-day public review period that pens down, and, you know, everything just stops until we get the comments and put together the final EIR. And then it would go for hearing for the, the EIR along with the entitlement project, so.
Okay. Okay.
So the EIR does not necessarily approve or disprove, or just prove projects, it is basically a statement that says where we have problems and mitigated these problems to a certain extent, and then it's used as information to the planning commission or to the city council, as whether or not they want to move forward with the project, right? Okay.
And the, the R6, density of six homes per acre, is that the correct density? Yeah, and, and so, I mean, I think, John, to your, your comment, on, on the one hand, we have a holistic project, we're only going to see half of it, and we'll have to use our very careful deliberation and thought during the entitlements process, after we get the, the feedback from the EIR, to, to act on what it is we can act on to get an outcome that is consistent with the next and last new neighborhood in the city. And I, 100% with you, I don't know what that'll look like, but it seems like it will move at pace.
Yeah, and there's even very practical considerations. For example, I think, I don't really see it in this overview, but I believe one answer to the question on fire egress has been a connection to the other development, maybe at that curve that seems closest to the property line. But obviously, I don't think this project can assume the completion of that project in a timely way, and if it's hanging its hat on a fiery egress, that seems inherently troublesome, for example. But there's many other ways. The two projects, I think, will need to relate. You know, there's a question of utilities, and it's kind of, you know, it's a lengthy list. I mean, and again, this is the Black Mountain neighborhood. I mean, we can't really think of this as a development project in a narrow sense.
One encouraging thing here that I see, that you mentioned, John, is the road going up, there's two or three different points, three, at least three points, that it could be connected with the northern section, what do you call it, de grande, Vista de Grande, so you could have fire apparatus at least two points getting in and out, so it's not as, though this is a half a mile of cul-de-sac without potential access and egress vehicles as well as fire apparatus.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Don.
Any more questions of applicants?
The, not questions so much as, you know, as, as we think about this as a potential new neighborhood and trying to be more coherent or more collective in our thinking, I have met with some folks to try to think about this, what would a neighborhood, what should it have? And I've kind of, with folks, brainstormed some ideas, and, you know, it's, it's kind of a list, and, and again, kind of where we're at in this process is to make sure anything that might or might not be on the table gets considered in the EIR. So I'm not saying I'm advocating for these or I'm supporting these, but I do think they're items that some folks feel are good for a new development like this, and hence should get considered. And I heard some of them tonight, but there's a couple others that have also been raised, and, and this was frankly driven by a review of our general plan. I mean, I think when, as a city, if we consider big things, and this is a big thing, this is 120 homes in a new, in a new, new neighborhood, our general plan, in my view, it's really the, you know, I wasn't involved in the process, I think it was put together five or six years ago, our 2030 general plan. I do think it is kind of the community's, you know, it's a lengthy process to put that together, and it, it ends up stating a number of goals and policies that are intended to reflect the community's aspirations and desires as the city evolves over time. And so I, I think you have to look at that thing if you're going to consider anything this significant to the city. And digging into that, a couple interesting things did come out, and again, this is just to get on the list for further study and to further understand it. An interesting concept, we've actually, it's, it's a very clear goal in our general plan, and it's been promulgated down through our zoning code, and it's a concept of a neighborhood hub. And right now, this project you see has, they're calling it a community hub, which is kind of a dead space, in my opinion, in that it's a couple meeting rooms that, you know, might really never get used. The notion of a neighborhood hub is one where the thought is, you know, here we have a subdivision where it's kind of car-bound, you know, you can't get anything done in your day unless you get in a car and drive somewhere, get on Alameda and probably end up parked on Laurel, which is kind of our concern. So the notion of a neighborhood hub is very small-scale, community-directed, neighborhood-serving retail. And so instead of a community hub of kind of a dead conference center space, it would be, you know, maybe a small coffee house and a daycare center, or maybe a yoga studio, but it'd be roughly the same size, but would consider retail. And the idea is, as I understand it, and this is actually really thoughtfully laid out in the San Carlos general plan, is that low-impact retail like that would give a new neighborhood a sense of place and connection with its community, because they could walk down their hill and have a cup of coffee instead of driving down and parking next to Pete's. So I, you know, it's, it's a thoughtful idea that's in our general plan, so I haven't completed my thinking about it. I'd be interested in any reactions the fellow commissioners would have, but I do think it's worthy of study in the EIR. And again, if it's, if it's used by the neighbors, then that saves car trips, and that seems to be the greatest concern, is car trips on Alameda and people making lefts out of the road at the bottom of the hill.
Thank you for that.
Another goal of our city is one of connected neighborhoods, and this would be a controversial point, and it is a goal of ours, and we have policies around it. Again, I don't know if I support or don't support this, but I think it's worthy to be studied, because the idea is simply neighborhoods aren't supposed to stand in isolation, simply because of these fire ingress egress issues we've talked about, and the notion of... And the notion of just, you know, neighborhoods should flow. I mean, every other neighborhood in San Carlos connects to the neighborhoods around it. So just generally, I don't like the idea of one road in and out of a big new neighborhood. That just doesn't seem like good, effective planning to me. But I don't know what the answer is. You know, obviously, it'd be better if we had the other developer at hand working to come up with something cohesive that made sense here. But I don't think we should, because we don't have that, I don't think we should not consider these things. And so I think, I would like to see the environmental review certainly consider how this neighborhood could be connected with the neighborhoods around it.
Yeah, as we all know, there's no decision to be made tonight. We, this is called a scoping meeting to bring out some of the issues that you brought out and we've brought out for the consultants to consider in writing the environmental impact report. Do you have a clarification question?
Is it possible for this commission to publish? What is it you can or cannot do? What is it, what is in your power? What we hear today is a decision that is oh but made. The law, or whatever you call it, okay, that you have, you can have six units per acre, is already a given according to some, okay? So what really, you know, there are certain things you will request that they put a pipe over here or put a pipe over there. What power do you have? Can you publish this, that we don't waste our time and hopes?
Yes, it's already published.
This is just, if this is, we don't have any power to alter, change, or don't allow.
Sir, I don't know where you come up with the idea we don't have any power to do anything. It's already, sir, it's already published. You can refer to the general plan. It's mostly in there. We're an advisory board appointed by the City Council who were elected. And in this, in this case, we have the authority to approve or postpone approval or reject it, ask them to come back and propose something else, but not tonight.
Yeah.
I hope that answers your question.
And I would chime in just generally on that because I, I hear that a lot. It's like, boy, what, what do you do as a commission? Or, you know, I happen to live in a household with a significant other who doesn't think anything should ever get built. So it's kind of curious for me. But my answer to her is, you know, if there are things, like we recently had a development before us on El Camino, close to Holly, and that's going to be four stories. And a lot of people in this room didn't like that, and some members of the commission didn't like that. But the zoning, flat out, provides for that in that area. And so our role is really to help the city apply the zoning that exists to specific projects. And I think that's important for people to understand because it's also empowering. I mean, it's not empowering here tonight because we are looking at RS6 zoning, and this is 68 houses on 11 and a half acres. So, you know, that's the zoning. And if you own private property, you would want to be able to build to your zoning as well. I mean, that's the way private property tends to work in our country. But if there, you know, but where you, it is an opportunity, and you could be proactive, is pull our zoning out. It's on our website. It's easy to access and understand. And if there's things you don't like, if you don't want to see four-story buildings on El Camino, then the city should change its zoning in that way. And that would be a political process that any citizen could kick off. But that's where those inputs could be had. Once it's here and we're looking at zoning and applying it to a specific project, yeah, the degrees of freedom are, are a lot narrower at that point.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I just, I apologize, I have to interrupt. And through the chair, I saw that a number of hands have been raised just now. And the commission, if you choose to do so, could choose to reopen the public hearing to take those comments. But I just wanted to remind the commission that there was a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move that we reopen the public hearing.
Sure, I'll second that.
And then the speakers would need to come up and speak at the microphone as called upon by the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have the commission, or perhaps even more importantly, staff, clarify what it is that the commission can do about the plan as it currently sits. So I, I heard Mr. Dugan talk a great deal about, is this really the right neighborhood and so on? But are those aesthetic considerations really within the purview of the commission to alter at this point in the project? And I think that may be the question on many people's minds here. Exactly. Not the general question that he asked, but a more specific one in terms of where this project is currently.
I'll answer for that. I think our, our main charge is to work in the public interest. To me, that means, and I am a planner, to me, that means what benefits the community in the long run? The most, what will help the most people for the longest amount of time? What will, any decision that gets made, whether it's City Council, Planning Commission, or the Transportation Commission, or the Park and Recreation people, decisions affect all of us living in this community. And that's, that's our responsibility is to do things that help the most people and hurt the fewest people. Okay, let's quickly.
Mr. Dugan, I just was wanting to clarify, I was taking notes earlier, and you said we won't be able to say no to this project. So I just wanted to know what you meant by that.
Sure. I mean, our, our goal is principally to compare proposed projects to their compliance with our zoning. And when projects do comply with our zoning, no is not, you know, it's, our, our, our system doesn't work that way. Our zoning allows for development pursuant to the zoning. And so that's really our role, is to review projects versus that zoning.
But if, if EIR doesn't pass, then doesn't, don't we have the option to say yay or nay to this project?
I mean, certainly, we, we have to make, it's a specific list of findings that we have to make.
Certain findings, I know we can't.
Yeah.
And they have to be specific findings.
And it's true. And one of the findings is that this new neighborhood in San Carlos is in compliance with our general plan. And those are some of the other items I'm bringing up because, you know, I'm not finding it, you know, a completely isolated, one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood, I don't think is actually in accordance with our general plan. But we're very early in that process.
And I, and I think, you know, tonight, we've said what, what we're, what we got from our, our fellow citizens, and it's really important, is the things that are on their mind that, that we need to make sure are looked at and to the extent that they have the potential for a negative impact on our community, and in particular, in, with regard to the environment and, as was described earlier by the consultant, that we understand what, what those, what the options to mitigate those are, and then have, you know, take that input and understand if those go far enough to really address what's been raised. And that, that will be, we have, will have quite a bit of work to do in that regard in subsequent meetings when we get the impact draft report.
I just wanted to comment on some of the creative things that have been done in the past in San Carlos. There was an owner that had 26 acres of land on Melundy. And he went to the city and said, I would like to build, I'd like two lots. And the city said, all right, we will give you two lots. You give us the 26 acres. And so what the city did was gave a covenant in perpetuity which preserved the entire landscape. You know, we're talking about sacrificing all these heritage trees. Well, these trees exist on the northern face of Melundy Drive because of that arrangement between the city and the landowner. So now here you have a landowner coming to you and saying, I'm going to remove all the trees. And what do you get for it? And so instead of having houses that are consistent with the density that surrounds it, you're selling it out to allow them to put high rises that exceed the height of all the rest of the homes, that all of the people that are looking down upon that will be seeing these flat roofs, and the trees will have been gone, as well as the birds and the rodents and the deer and the mountain lions and the wild cats, all of those passed by my house because of those 26 acres that were granted to the city of San Carlos.
Thank you for your comments. And I have a slip from Mark Olbert. Welcome, sir.
Welcome, Chair Bradley. Nice to say hello, everybody, commissioners, staff, and community members. I'm Mark Olbert. I live at 286 Chestnut Street. And I just realized, as I was filling out the slip, that I'm living there as of 22 years next month, which is a lot longer than I thought I would ever be in San Carlos. So it goes to show how great a place this is. I also have the privilege of being one of the five people who sit on the City Council, who ultimately, over time, are making the rules that the Planning Commission is charged with implementing. There were a bunch of really good comments tonight, in my opinion, a bunch of really good questions. And I don't want this to be taken as a plug for my state-of-the-city address, which is on Thursday, March 14th. But, but oddly enough, as I was sitting there, I realized that an awful lot, not all, but an awful lot of the questions were exactly, they make, trying to answer them or share what I've learned over the years about them, make up about half of the presentation that I'm planning on giving. So if anybody's interested, please feel free to come to Devil's Canyon starting at 5:30 on Thursday, March 14th. You have to get tickets through the Chamber of Commerce. I apologize for that. I think they're 20 bucks a pop. But they have to offset their costs there. And if, if either logistically or financially or for whatever reason, if that doesn't work out for anybody, please get in touch with me through my email address at the city. I'm happy to meet with people for coffee and small groups and private and sort of share with you what I've learned, which I think may help people understand the basic answer to the question of, what is the authority of the Planning Commission? Or for that matter, even the City Council in any given situation like this. So thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you letting me make these comments.
Thanks for being here and your, your comments, Mark. Way in the back.
Excuse me, two quick clarifications. Mr. Dugan, how would a citizen of San Carlos go about encouraging changes to the zoning of a particular area? And the second clarification from, from Ms. Bergman, if in fact the, the EIC, if I'm saying that?
EIR.
EIR, I'm sorry. Does not in fact meet the criteria necessary? Is that just up for another reassessment? Or is that like a permanent decision in which it will be, no, no ground can be broken?
Do you know? I don't know for sure. I, we can.
Mr. Sebake can best answer that.
Sure. So the Planning Commission will consider the environmental impact report and all the information in it. And the commission can do a number of different things. They can send it back for more information or clarify things in the environmental impact report. Essentially, they, they would have the authority to approve or deny the environmental impact report. So for them to approve it, they would have to be satisfied with all the information and mitigations and things like that, and analysis. Now, if they're unsatisfied or they believe that it's inadequate, they could deny or, or not approve the environmental impact report. At that point, the project could not go forward.
Thank you. And then my first.
Sure. I mean, I'll defer to staff for a bit more detail. But I mean, it's, it's a political process that ultimately the City Council would have to approve a change to the zoning map. Is there more color on how that process, how a citizen might kick off a process like that?
Well, bringing it up at a meeting like this is a good start. But essentially, there has to be a reason to rezone an area. And there, you know, there could be a lot of different reasons that a community wants to look at rezoning. It could be that there's a threat to the community, a significant threat, or a land use that the community believes would significantly change community character, and the current zoning would allow that kind of thing to occur. But there would have to be, you know, a significant reason for a community to kind of look at a, at rezoning, particularly if it's just one piece of land. In fact, you know, state law and general plans encourage consistency in zoning and general plans. And for instance, if, if the city was to take this, and I'm just going to use an analogy like, create a multifamily zoning district here or a commercial zone just with this property, it wouldn't be permitted by state law because it would be inconsistent with the surrounding land use. So there has to be, the community would need to make findings in, in support of why it would have to or would consider a change in zoning, particularly for one large piece of property like this.
Thank you for that. I do want to be clear, you know, once a project is before us, I think the bar would be very high to change zoning with regard to a specific piece of property, very high. This is more a general matter. If we think there is a part of the city that might not be properly zoned, that's the conversation to have on a general basis, not specifically aimed at, you know, one group's development project.
Thank you very much for your clarifications.
One more?
Thank you. So I want to kind of pick up on that piece of the conversation. So I think it's very clear the community's opposed to this. I think it's very clear we have very little power under the zoning to do anything about it. On the other hand, if I pick up on your comment, it's clear that if you look at sort of common law, if you will, and that's picking up on your comment, the whole neighborhood is three houses per acre. It's not six houses per acre. So the common usage clearly over the entire time that this whole neighborhood has been built and in existence is not six houses per acre, even though it may be zoned that way because you can't find anything on that map that's even close to that. So my suggestion, if we can't change that, is to focus on all the EIR issues that people raised that one could reasonably come to the conclusion that less-dense housing is important because of fire risk, because it's a cul-de-sac, because of traffic, because of all the things that were entertained tonight. But literally looking at that, the zoning, whatever it may be legally, by usage, it's not six houses per acre. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. I would just respond to that briefly by saying all the neighborhoods in that area are RS6. Just, yeah.
I know that, but if you look at actually the map.
Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for reopening public comment to pick up and follow up on public interest in a few areas. My name's Christian Vesha. I've met with probably all of you at some point. I was part of a co-founding member of Good Growth San Carlos that engaged very much with the Planning Commission and the City Council on the recent changes to the RS6 zoning. I am just getting up to speed on what's going on with the Black Mountain property and came down to listen and learn this evening. So what I'm up here to do is ask a question. So what I'm up here to do is ask a question. I'm very familiar with the RS6 zoning standard now, from having gone through the process of seeing how our zoning standard compares to other communities. I was a little surprised to hear when someone mentioned that the developments are three stories with a roof. My understanding is that RS6 has a limit of 28 feet, and typically, people get about two stories out of that height. And I just wanted to ask, what aspect of the zoning standard affords the ability to build a three-story, if these indeed are three-story units with roof decks?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a good question, the answer maybe it's a hillside overlay, but...
Exactly correct, it's governed under the hillside overlay, for the height, yes.
And then that's 35 feet, is that correct?
Correct, yes, as well as the floor area, governed under the hillside overlay.
Okay, thank you. It certainly seems, and I would add my personal opinion to the notion that when you look at fit in the community and character of the community, something with this amount of density does not seem consistent with what San Carlos is today as a, as a community. So I would add my voice to that community and that group. Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Yes.
I just wanted to get something clarified. If the zoning is six units per acre, I understand that that's a limit. So is it possible that if the planning commission finds the, with the EIR, different things, that they can recommend that there be three units per acre? Is that still possible?
I would, I would say it's not possible, because it doesn't fit in with existing zoning, unless we were to change the zoning, but as was mentioned before, if we were to change the zoning on just this 11 acres, one ownership property, that would be illegal to do, because it shows favoritism to one owner. Obviously, we, we don't want to do that.
I, I do think we need to see what the, what the findings are, what the conclusions are out of the EIR, and to the extent that, for example, density creates, and a circumstance that is not mitigatable other than through lowering density, then I think we'll have some valuable information. So I, we'll have to see what those conclusions are. And I think if, well, again, rather than prejudge it, let's, we'll let that work go on, and then there'll certainly be time for public comment. Everyone will get to read the, both the, the insights, the conclusions, and the recommendations coming out of all of these points that you, that the public have raised tonight.
And through the chair, a number of the questions that have come up have been a bit more procedurally and about the city code, so we'll group those together and prepare some questions and answers that we can post on the project website. If you received that citywide postcard that was mailed out, that link to the project website is on there. And just let us know if you have any questions, and we'll add that up there.
Terrific, very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. One more.
What, what governs the decision? Simple question, what governs the permits to remove the trees? Because if you do not grant, if anybody, the trees, the 260 trees, if, if the permit to remove them is not granted, this project is dead. What governs the removal of the trees? I understand, they have the right, they purchased the property, they have the right to build to RS6 code, they don't have an automatic right to remove the trees. This is governed by certain rules. What are these rules, and how is this, these permits will be granted? Because 120 or some 130 trees are heritage trees, okay, we all love them, we all, it's part of the community, okay? So that would be interesting to know, how these permits will be granted.
Through the chair, staff can answer that question, and if you recall, at the beginning of the presentation, we, it was shared with the commission and the public what permits would be needed for this project. So not only this, does this project require a design review permit, which has its own criteria and findings that need to be met, there's also a conditional use permit required in order to improve the townhouse concept, again, along with its own specific criteria in order to grant approval. There's a grading and dirt health certificate, and there's a tree removal permit, and the city has a protected tree ordinance by which certain findings and criteria need to be met. So all of these permits require its own specific set of criteria that the planning commission will have to consider as far as taking action on the project.
And I'd just like to add that I'm a protector of trees, and we always get an arborist's report on the trees, and I've never voted, I don't think I've ever voted to remove trees that were not dead, or sick, or had other problems related to that. We have to look at the whole view, it's not as simple as saying you can't remove this tree because it's protected. One more.
Wouldn't we have more luck opposing this as a conditional use permit, allowing them to do townhouses? Wouldn't we be able to oppose it in that way? Wouldn't that have more power to oppose it? Because it's zoned for single-family, right? So conditional use means you've got to allow them to do townhouses versus houses, right?
That's correct, and if you look in our municipal code, and again, if you have any questions on the criteria that we look at to act upon these types of permits, I can direct you to that area, but the use permit findings would need to be made by the commission.
So I think what most people here are saying tonight is, we would oppose the conditional use change to townhouses, and request that they be required to be single-family as they are now. Thank you.
And thank you. I don't see any more hands up, so I don't want to stop this, if there are any more comments, either way, support or opposition. Questions of the staff or the commission?
Are they removing some of these heritage trees to build the houses? Or are they removing the heritage trees because they're sick and they're not, arborists say that they, they can come out? If they're removing them to build houses there, like they are on our Carmelita up there, this, this is what I'd like to know. All those trees sick, they're sick, the arborists said they have to go.
So through the chair, staff would like to comment that we don't have all the answers to that yet, that will be evaluated in the environmental impact report.
And then how did this contractor spend all this money to do all this stuff here when he didn't have his answers ahead of time, so that he knows that he can go ahead with this project? I mean, I don't understand, I, I've done building, but I mean, I, I, I've done a lot of work ahead of time to know what we can do, what we can't do, but there's been a lot of money put in here with what their plans being drawn up and everything else, and, and, and we're, we're doing all these...
It's not, it's, it's not approved yet. We're not going to make that decision tonight either. Question?
Hi, my question, I'm Lisa Wellman, my question is in regards to the hillside overlay. In looking at the property or the parcel, I guess this question is for Lisa, probably, Sanders, is the hillside overlay for the entire parcel, or how do you, how do you define the hillside overlay? Because some of this is relatively flat, down in the lower area, where you, the steeper slope is as you head up the hill. So these properties that are facing Alameda, that are three stories plus the rooftop deck, are clearly not hillside.
Correct, so for this development, since they're merging all the properties and doing the condo map for the townhomes, it's considered as one property, so we looked at the average crosswalk of the entire site, to determine if the hillside overlay would apply or not. There's some pros and cons to the hillside overlay, as far as the development's concerned, they do get the additional height, some flexibilities about the setbacks with garages, but then there's also a larger area that needs to be set aside in natural state, and so there's some benefits to that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any more hands, so I'll move to close the additional comment, public hearing.
I'll second.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley.
Yes. Thank you. I want to express my gratitude for each and every one of you coming this evening, especially the people that got up and spoke. This is part of our job to listen to you and your opinions, and we take them seriously. One thing I've learned as a planning commissioner, and as a planner before that, is you're never going to please everyone, because there are about 100 people here this evening, that means there's about 101 different solutions to the problem, I found. But nevertheless, we live in a democracy, we cherish the idea that we have free speech, and if you don't like what someone says, it doesn't mean you don't have to like them, but you may not like their opinions or the outcome. But I, I do really appreciate you all being here and participating in the democratic process.
I have one final point I'd like to make. The, first, see, all this, the back and forth, and all the input, very valuable, really appreciate everyone's time, and everyone's concerns here, very, very helpful. There's one final element that I want to make sure does get included in our environmental review, and that's, we have a goal in our city to protect historic and cultural resources, and that has been filtered down to a policy to foster the preservation, restoration, and reuse of architecturally and/or historically significant structures and sites. And as I've thought through that, you know, this is the Black Mountain property, that Black Mountain Spring, I think, is a culturally important site for the city of San Carlos. So personally, I would like to see, as this project unfolds, some degree of celebration of that site, and I don't know what that might look like, but I would appreciate that, getting studied, some form of, you know, it's a natural spring. It could end up being a parklet, I know there's a number of parklets proposed as part of this project, and one of the parklets could encompass an element of the spring, I think that would be nice, it could even provide some educational plaques or something like that, to explain the historic significance of, of this site, and what it's meant to San Carlos, I think this might have been one of the very first industries of San Carlos. So it's interesting, and, and I don't think it should just be relegated as part of this project, I think it should be, be celebrated.
Thank you, sounds like a good idea to me. Any more comments, questions? Then I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you again for all, everyone coming.
Through the chair, we have just a couple of items, reports, correspondence, a couple of other things to complete on the agenda.
We're reopened, sorry. Got carried away.
I've been living here 63 years, I've gone through earthquakes, I've gone through mudslides that nobody ever mentioned, I've gone through a lot of things over here in San Carlos, it is just not the same. If you build that construction...
I just have a couple announcements, if you'd like me to start, I think...
Sure.
Yeah, okay, sure, this is just very brief. I just wanted to let the commission know that the city council adopted the wireless ordinance on February 25th. An announcement will be made in the April issue of the City of San Carlos Good Living Newsletter, so the residents can understand about the small cell wireless facilities, which now are possible in residential neighborhoods, so we'll be getting the word out via the Good Living Newsletter. And then, as you probably saw, there were three letters on the dais this evening.
Yes.
And then, just a quick announcement, we are having another public workshop for the bike and pedestrian plan at the L'Oreola Building tomorrow night, so that's Tuesday, March 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., L'Oreola, over on the east side, for the bike and pet plan. And then we have one project, info project, on the 600 block of Cedar, in the queue for a planning commission review at our next hearing, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.